I'd like to call this meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board for February, Thursday, February 4th, 2021 to order. I'd like to read several notices that pertain to our meeting. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission to the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screenings before entering the meeting room. The special meeting scheduled for February 4th, 2021 at 5:00 PM will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on board docs located on the school board's website. A period for public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in board docs, submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item detail. Online comments are available for public review. We will open the meeting now with a call to order and we will start with an invocation by Connie Bernard and the pledge of allegiance. Oh, you have the pledge too, I'm sorry. Connie will do both. Okay.
Please join me in reciting the Lord's Prayer. Our Father...
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Please join me for the prayer, the pledge. Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Sorry for putting you on the spot like that. Row call.
District 9, President Tatman.
Present.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue. District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Present.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Gode.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
We have a quorum. We move on to item number C1, a resolution. Consideration of a request for the approval of a resolution authorizing membership of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System into the Organization Council of Great City Schools. Before I take a motion, I was going to let Dr. Narcisse speak a little to it.
Good evening. Excited to be here in my first live meeting. Just wanted to put the proposal of the East Baton Rouge Parish Public Schools returning back to the Council of Great City Schools. We are the second-largest school district in the state of Louisiana in our urban district. The council consists of 72 of the largest urban cities in the United States, and we would benefit from not only their membership but also engaging with other cities with all of the work that they're doing as we think about what is best for our city to move the work. So that is my recommendation.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Bernard and seconded by Ms. Dyson? Any questions from the board? I don't see any. Oh, Michael Gode. Mr. Gode.
Thank you. I guess this is a sort of a combination for you and perhaps President Tatman. We, in the past, had been members of Great City Schools, and about, I guess, six years ago or so, we dropped out of that. And I've gotten several comments from constituents asking why should we be rejoining today? And I'm not going to try to answer it. I think I know what the answer is, but I just wanted to open that question up so we could have that conversation, both for the public of why we didn't use it then and why we'd be looking to use it now. So I'd like to ask that question.
Maybe I'll start off with saying...
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we were members for a very long time, and it was a lot of money, and we were going through budget cuts. And when we sort of reviewed how we were using those resources, we really weren't. And so it wasn't any knock against Great City Schools or anything, but we really weren't using a lot of the resources. So I'll let you speak to what you can do, but from my conversation with you, I was one of the ones who led the charge to get out of it so we could save the money. I actually think it would be a great idea if it provides you resources moving forward. So if you want to speak to what kind of resources you can get out of. Thank you, Mr. Gode.
Thank you. So the main thing is for us is we'd like to use it for whether we're doing auditing reports, when we're building our strategic plan of our key performance indicators, the council can provide you with examples, examples of that. Also give board members the opportunity to talk to other board members in other cities around how they've gone through their process. A lot of the memberships we tend to use in all the districts that I have been, has been extensive use of the council. Even our transition report, if we were part of the council, we would have just used them and not have to pay external funds for that. So my goal is that we use them extensively, and they also provide us with reports on, from academics, on how we're going to move our literacy work, to our key performance indicators and other portions of the work. So I believe that we will, it will benefit us in the long run, not only economically but also as we move our academic work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gode. Any other questions from board members? Seeing none right now, we'll go to the audience. Any comments from the audience? We take comments from the audience. Any comments on this agenda item? I thought, I thought Mark was coming up to speak at the microphone. I see no, I see no comments from the audience. We go back to the board. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Oh, Ms. Bernard.
I just wanted to say that I think it was Ms. Dyson might be able to refresh my memory. Was it 2012 or 2013? It was the first major budget cycle that we had to cut significant amounts. It was around 20-something million that year, and we decided to let that go. Was that 2012 or 13? Do you remember? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Any other comments or questions from the board? Ms. Dyson?
But I will say that I am in the belief that we weren't using, we weren't getting what we needed to out of it at that point, but I'm not sure that we've had a leader with as much urban, other urban district experience and experience with Great City Schools. So I feel confident in that you will assure that we do get our money's worth out of this and more. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Do we need to do a row call?
I think one of, is a vote not recording?
Yeah, Mr. Lannis. I have, oh, no, it's not for you either.
You can do a row call, though.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Yes.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Yes.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Gode.
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District 9, President Tatman.
Yes. Item passes. We move now to C2, Strategic Plan Agreement. Consideration of a request for approval of the superintendent to engage the services of the Arbinger Institute to develop a strategic plan for the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and related matters. And I'm going to handle the same way. I'm going to let the superintendent speak to it.
Thank you, President Tatman. The request is we, is to use the Arbinger Institute, which has been a, an organization that has done strategic planning and governance work with the board, and they have done it with many school districts, similar to urban experience as East Baton Rouge Parish Public Schools. Districts that are similar were DeKalb County, Georgia, Prince George's County, Maryland. They've also done work with Madison County, Wisconsin, and they've had extensive experience, not only working on a strategic plan but also helping boards to be able to function on how they think about their key performance indicators and do their work. I'm recommending that we use the Arbinger Institute with the private dollars that we're getting to do this work so we can be able to deliver the strategic plan by the first week of June to the community.
Okay. Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Gode, seconded by Ms. Dyson? Ms. Collins?
Just want...
Vice President Collins, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to make sure that we are being clear as we move forward, we just voted for to rejoin and pay membership, and a lot of what they offer, you mentioned some overlap with these consultants, and so I know that the public wants us to use our monies wisely. And so as we move forward, if we can see why we need both, that would be great.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Any other comments from the board members at this time? Seeing none, we will go to the audience. Any members that would like to make a comment on the item C2? Yes, yes ma'am. Approach the microphone, I'm sorry. Just to explain to everybody, the light that is up there will go green when you have three minutes, and then it will go yellow when you have a minute left, and then red when it stops. So, thank you. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Shaquita Tatum. I'm with Stanford Children. Just want to give all of you my thank yous. We greatly support everything, and we're excited that, about y'all doing an assessment and planning to move a little for our children. It is exciting to see that no time is being wasted, and moving, moving straight into the strategic planning so soon after the superintendent has been announced is very outstanding, and thank you for putting our children first. I would like to thank the board for taking the necessary steps needed to start our strategic planning. This is a breath fresh air that we can create, a plan for a path, pathway forward. This is exactly what needs to be happening for our children of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Hello, everyone. I'm not going to try to get too close to the mic because I don't have my lice all. But I just wanted to lift up that I'm glad that paths are being taken on behalf of Step Up Louisiana. Again, my name is Maria Harmon, and we do want to know more about the Council of Great Cities and Schools. What comes with the focus of urban education? You know, I feel like more of our parents need to fully understand what these processes are, just for full transparency. We also are in connections with other cities like Chicago and New York, where we've gotten feedback from parents about the effectiveness of being in membership. And we also are curious about where does CGCS get its funding? Like, does each school district that's a member pay a fee? Or do they get a percentage off of all the contracts that are given out to school districts that receive services? So these are just questions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. Any other comments on item C2, the Strategic Plan Agreement? Seeing no other comments from the audience, we go back to the board. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
It was hung up, is there?
Why don't we just go ahead and do a row call, though?
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Yes.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Yay.
Yay? District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Gode.
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District 9, President Tatman.
Yes. The item passes. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege right now to ask council and Ms. Collins to step forward so that we can swear Ms. Collins in as vice president. As you may recall, she wasn't able to attend in person, the last meeting where she was elected vice president, so we weren't able to swear her in. So we will take a moment, please.
Also, please swap meetings. Everyone go into this committee of the whole so you can vote. On board docs. I apologize.
I, Dawn Collins...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of this state...
And the Constitution and laws of this state...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform all the duties...
Discharge and perform all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As vice president...
As vice president...
Of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board...
Of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
And understanding...
And understanding...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Right into action, huh? Just as a note, Ms. Harmon just suggested that everybody in board docs get out of the special meeting and then get back into the committee of the whole.
Is it a regular meeting? Oh, okay, got you. Sorry? Yeah, I figured out what it is now. Everyone was in the special meeting. I was in the committee of the whole. That's what it was.
Just ahead of his time.
That's all.
Ms. Collins asked a good question. Do we need to get into the other teams? Okay, all right.
I need to read some instructions. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% of the, of the capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the room. The committee of the whole meeting scheduled for February 4th immediately following the special meeting will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on board docs located on the school board's website. A period for written public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in board docs and submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. Online comments are available for public review. We will now open the meeting and do row call.
District 9, President Tatman.
Present.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Here.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Gode.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
We have a quorum. We now move to item C1, update from the superintendent.
There you go.
So a few announcements. East Baton Rouge Parish Meal Delivery Program. All EBR students are now eligible to receive boxed meals throughout the spring semester. Registered virtual students will continue to receive weekday meals, Monday through Friday. In addition to the weekday meals, weekend meals are being added. In addition to the meals provided at school, students reporting to school buildings for in-person instruction are now eligible to receive a meal box, which include five suppers, five snacks, and weekend meals. Please visit our website to register your child. Three Baton Rouge Magnet High School students have been named Presidential Scholar candidates by the U.S. Department of Education. The U.S. Department of Education identifies the top 20 12th grade boys and 12th grade girls plus ties in each state based on ACT, SAT scores, and nominations by the State Department of Education. The candidates will complete an extensive application, which, which will be submitted to the Commission for Presidential Scholars, which will select one male and one female Presidential Scholar from each state, plus 15 more, which, which are chosen at large. Presidential Scholars are honored with a reception at the White House with the President of the United States. The following Baton Rouge high seniors were named Presidential Scholar candidates. Fariz Fardusi, Jay Ayar, and Ju Wu Nu. Congratulations to these three students. National Signing Day. Congratulations to all of our student athletes who participated in National Signing Day. Scotlandville, Woodland, Glen Oaks, and Estruma High School has ceremonies for students who signed to play football at colleges and universities across the country. Again, congratulations to these students. Mardi Gras Holiday. All schools and offices will be closed February 15th and 16th in observance of Mardi Gras. Also, students will not attend school on February 17th. However, teachers are expected to return to work on the 17th and participate in professional development activities. And last, just wanted to thank all of the faculty and staff for their hard work that they've done. This week, we provided two town hall meetings, where one, we spoke to all faculty and staff concerning the vaccination, vaccination for the COVID-19. More information will be soon to come on that. And as well, to thank for our parent community who also participated in our town hall to talk about any information that they had for their next steps. That is my report.
Thank you. We will now move to item C2.
Ms. Collins.
Oh, I'm sorry. Board Member Howard?
Thank you, Vice President Collins. I just had a quick question, Superintendent Narcisse. There was an article this week that really struck my attention, and I just wanted to kind of get an understanding of where we are, where we are as a district with it. So there was an article posted by the Advocate in relation to Orleans Parish Schools about 16% of their students being unaccounted for through this virtual slash in-person environment. So I just wanted to know if there's anything we as a district is doing to like, make sure that we're tracking all of our kids and have put eyes on the majority of our kids. I'm mostly worried about it at the high school level. If you've been paying attention to the news of Baton Rouge, there's just been a lot of like, young people losing their life at the, as a result of gun violence. So if there's any particular thing that we're doing to track kids who have not shown up to either virtual school or showed up to school in person, I would love to like, get a report out on that, on the numbers, and see what we as a district are mandating schools do, to just get some kind of touch point on our students. So I just wanted to lift that up and bring that to the attention of the board and to the district staff.
Board Member Gode?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, being that this is your first full week here in Baton Rouge and your first in-person school board meeting, I just really wanted to extend a welcome to you as a board and wish you the best of luck as we go through all of this together. And so I'm glad you're here. Welcome aboard and thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Lannis?
Yes, welcome aboard, Mr. Superintendent. Nice to have you here in Baton Rouge full-time. I just wanted to give another update. Last Friday, we had an opportunity to unveil the new gymnasium at Glen Oaks High School named after Coach Harvey Adger, someone who has committed over 40 years in that community. And I just wanted to thank this board for allowing that school to have that recognition for that coach. And I also wanted to shout him out. If you're looking and watching tonight, Coach, we know that you're nine, you're six wins away from your ninth, 900th win, and that will put him second all-time in the state of Louisiana. He'll be a top 20 high school coach in the United States of America once he hits that mark, but I just wanted to highlight that and again, welcome your board.
Board Member Dyson?
Yes, I just was going to piggyback on something that Mr. Howard spoke about, and, and it would be great if we would get some kind of presentation or report, or just some information on what, how our children are being counseled through this challenging time that we're all in. I feel like, I'd like to know, you know, the social workers that we have contracted, and are they visiting with our students on an ongoing basis, whether it be in-person or virtually and that kind of thing? Because this is really a trying time for quite, for us adults, and so we know that, that there could be increased need for this. So just if we could get some kind of an update. Thank you.
All right, any other? Hearing none, we shall move on to item C2. BR Bytes, a grant partnership update. BR Bytes is a partnership with LSU and EBR School System and the U.S. Department of Education and NSF.
All right. Good evening, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, Superintendent Narcisse, and also members of the board. I'm proud tonight to kind of present to you our BR... I'm proud tonight to kind of present to you our BR Bytes team. And you're going to presentation tonight to kind of see the work that's been happening over really the past three years. The team, in conjunction with our team as well, have been working through the pathway programs for computer science that leads from 7th to 11th grade and really a coordinated, comprehensive approach to computer science pathways. And tonight, I want to introduce to you Dr. John Underwood, who is our grant manager and really our guru from the EBR side for the BR Bytes grant. Many of you know John. He was a former District Teacher of the Year from Baton Rouge Magnet High School. And again, he does great work with us and also co-wrote the grant. So, he's going to go through and introduce the rest of the team to you and give you a chance to see some of the great work that's happening. And again, I want to appreciate our, tell our teachers and our principals how much I appreciate their work in expanding these pathways and with all the choices they have, they've chosen to really make this happen at all the middle school and high school levels. So, thank you.
Good evening. We are excited to be a part of something that's really unique. Our program began with the partnership at Liberty High, developing some courses for computer science. And it evolved over time to include something where now we are part of a national initiative of CS for All. And the goal of CS for All is to work on closing the equity gap and to open more opportunities for students across all backgrounds. And so, together with the National Science Foundation, the U.S. Department of Education, LSU, and EBR began our partnership. And right after we started our partnership, COVID hit, making it a little bit of a challenge. But we did have some success with moving things a little bit forward. So, essentially, what BR Bytes stands for is Baton Rouge Bringing Youth Technology Education Success. And we founded this idea upon our NSF grant looking to create the state's first-ever 7 through 12 class offering pathway for computer science. And we're one of the first districts in the state to actually be working towards bringing this online. We have all of our high schools working with us and half of our middle schools so far, and this is just the first year of our five-year grant. Each of the classes on the pathway is designed to allow the students to work through programming as well as increase their mathematical skills with application, while also learning career skills that are tied directly to some of the features that are there. As we look at our second EIR grant, this is to assess the effectiveness of the 9th grade course, Introduction to Computational Thinking, on math scores. And so, what we saw was in the preliminary research, there was a slight improvement of Algebra I and EOC scores in our students. And so, what we're working on doing is an integrated model in which the students take the ICT course. And we have a group that is taking it in 9th and another group taking it in 10th and doing a comparative study to see the impact of this, not only on their understanding of programming as well as STEM education, but also the impact that this may have on math. Our programming language we selected works with Haskell, and that is a language that is very mathematically based and looks very similar to what you would see for writing algebra equations. If we can go to the next one. Both grants are designed to increase access and reduce inequity in students' ability to take computer science. One of our goals was to not only increase the offering, but to make sure that all high schools in EBR were offering a rigorous curriculum that was developmentally appropriate for grade-level mindsets, but also offered opportunities to connect to industry as well as other career pathways. And one of the things that we worked hard to do is to work with training our principals and counselors on breaking the misconceptions that might be kind of a little white nerdy guy who is into computers and make that into something more that's open for all of our students. And we've had some good success with this. A big thing that we emphasized is that math ability is not a limiting factor. We work with students at all levels. And so, because of the scaffolding built into the curriculum, there is something for differentiation, but also there's something for each student to be able to increase their abilities while being able to access the content and work with it freely. All of our schools are listed here. We'll be bringing three more middle schools online this summer. We do have at least one teacher trained at every high school. In most of the high schools, we have two. We do have two middle school teachers from each of the schools so far. And our goal is to see this program continue to expand, not just within the Baton Rouge area, but also externally as we bring on some rural districts that are part of our federal grant as well. Essentially, what we did was integration. We wanted this to be something that built into the programs that EBR already offered. So, if you notice that there's three options here, A, B, and C. One option would be for your traditional college-bound pathway student. The second option would be for the EBR BRCC partnership with CTEC. And our final option is to tie into the IBM program at Cytec, which is at TARA. And so, what we did was work with all three programs to coordinate and triangulate so that we were able to maximize student offerings. Our results so far, we currently have 1,835 students that have taken a computer science course as of the end of December. That's almost three times the rate of students that we had previously at this time. 67% are identified with a minority background, 47% economically disadvantaged. We currently have 26 EBR teachers that had never taught computer science before. And a unique aspect of our training is we don't just focus on people with a computer background, a math, or a science background. We're actually working with teachers from all backgrounds. Some of our best have been coaches as well as social studies teachers. We were recognized in January of 2020 by the U.S. Department of Education with a visit from the Assistant Secretary to Liberty High. I was selected as one of 10 teachers nationally to work on a national project with the Computer Science Teachers Association to develop equity and equality within the computer science curriculum for national level. And I've been working with them for the past year on that. We've also had three successful research articles published within National Review as well as top-tier journals. And we are the first school district in Louisiana to bring the chance for all students to be able to have computer science in grade 7 through 12, even despite COVID, which made it a little interesting. What you're seeing now is what the students actually do. On the left of the screen is the programming language of Haskell. You can see it has a series of Cartesian points. These correlate to the drawing that you see on the right. So, you can see that this is an early example of a project that students would do in which they have to learn how to place and move objects. We encourage our teachers to teach in a project-based method where students present their work and critique it, much like they would for clients. And so, as such, the complexity that you see is pretty advanced for something that a student would produce in about September or October. These are actual student projects from East Baton Rouge Parish. These are our students. Each square represents a different one. You'll notice that some of the squares have more than one contributor because students work in groups. We worked to do an integration of culturally relevant pedagogy in which students explored what culture means for them. And so, you can see where students chose things like Black Lives Matter as well as different historic monuments in the state. You can also see two examples of polygonal art in which students were learning about the different types of art that's there with the fox and the little orb. And on the far left, you can see a final project for the semester where students really embraced a different artistic mindset and using artistic concepts and geometric decomposition created two very unique images. These are our teachers who have done a phenomenal job. And all of these ladies and gentlemen have been superstars in and of their own because they have made this work in a virtual hybrid world with a lot of unknowns. And they also were teaching curriculum for the first time that none of them had ever seen before. And their results, as you can see on the screen again, are truly awesome. Our students have amazed us with their work. And you can see scaffolding and differentiation from the simple geometric to the wild and crazy. All of our students are capable of doing these amazing things. And this is something that really combines the arts, the humanities, computer science, as well as linking it to graphic design and careers. On our final slide, you see our team, some of which are in the audience tonight. And so, we do have from LSU, Dr. Moreno, who's our PI, as well as Mr. Nique from our district. You can also see a list of various members of both East Baton Rouge Parish as well as LSU. We have members of the Department of Math, Physics, Computer Science, Education, as well as members of Assessment and Educational Research, as well as our own district staff who are working to coordinate and maximize the resources for our students. And thank you very much.
Alright, that's it? Alright, Ms. Doc- Board Member Dyson. I'm sorry.
Yes, I wanted to ask, so, in this course, is this a qualifying course for TOPS? Refresh my memory. I think they have to have one computer science, don't they?
For TOPS, right now, there isn't a computer science requirement. And so, this does qualify under the Jump Start Pathways. And it also qualifies in some of the elective categories, but it is not on the TOPS University Requirement List because there's not a computer science required at this time.
It would seem that it would be advantageous for us and our students to look into some kind of, you know, with the TOPS Committee, to have this be one of the science requirements if they so choose.
We are petitioning for the ICT course, the one which you saw the images from, to be included as an art credit. And it is under review right now by the Board of Regents. I was hoping to be able to announce that tonight, but the process has been slowed because of State Department red tape. But it is working its way through, and it's something we have worked on since January of last year.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Board Member Dyson, we can look into courses that are similar to what's being presented to see where it would actually fit in the curriculum. It's integrated, so students can receive credit for it. So, it's something we can kind of look into. I was just asking myself the same question. Only being 72 hours on, here on the ground, I don't have enough time to take a look at that, but I will look into that and see what courses that we have that can help benefit kids, accelerate them for.
That sounds great. Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Board Member Lannis.
I just wanted to say, my hat goes off to you and your team. This is phenomenal work, looking at the data breakdown, the tracking of students. This is, I love it. I just wanted to let you know that. And also, I saw that one of my former high school teachers is actually part of the team. So, that just makes it even more, just commendable. Please keep up the great work. I'd love to see you all expand this all across our district. And to Mr. Nique, keep up the beard, man. It looks good on you.
Alright, Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, I can't even tell you how much I appreciate this. This is so cool, you know? I love it when I see things that I think will make kids' brains tingle. And this one made mine tingle. So, I'm hoping that, I'm sure it's going to happen on the, you know, on the recipient's side. The thing in particular that intrigues me is that slide where you showed the programming, you know, the numbers and all of that. And I was trying to see it. And then, on the other side is the picture of it, you know? So, to bring those two together and see how, that's just a perfect picture of how arts and STEM just blend together to form that steam, you know, that we love so much. So, thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing how this integrates into curriculum. And I'd love to see some faces, you know, when this, when this comes in front of these kids in the, on the curriculum level. Thank you very much.
Okay. Seeing no other requests to speak. Thank you very much. Alright. We now move forward to Item C3, the East Baton Rouge Fair Share Program. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board Members and Dr. Narcisse. One of my first statements I'd like to make is that diversity and inclusion. You can have diversity, but without inclusion, you marginalize your success. So, one of the things that the Fair Share Program strives for is inclusion. The East Baton Rouge Parish School System, while providing a nice physical environment in which students are continuing to receive high-quality, highly impactful education, also has a unique opportunity in support of social and economic responsibility to have a positive impact on the economic growth of the Baton Rouge community. This is in part due to the reinvigoration of the Supplier Diversity Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise Program, now known as the Fair Share Program, which occurred in 2011. The primary objective of the Fair Share Program is to help ensure that participation of MWBEs occurs as a part of procurement and contract opportunities with the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. To help accomplish this objective, the Fair Share Program serves as a portal through which women and minority-owned businesses gain access to opportunities within the district. It also helps participants become what we call turnkey-ready, so as to increase their potential to participate in these opportunities. But there's another benefit to it. And that is, as a predominantly minority student population, the utilization of women and minority-owned businesses also can serve as a positive impact on student recruitment, academic performance, and aspirations. Currently, there are 85 companies in the Fair Share Program covering approximately 21 categories. Upon last count, based upon the responses of a survey, 60% of the active companies in the program have received contracts and/or purchase orders for services. This has occurred over the past two years. What's important about this is that the contracts range from under 2,000 to as large as 1.9 million. But it's not just one crack, one contract that these companies have received. They receive multiple contracts. This equates to about 51 companies, which is up from 19 companies based upon data from 2018. Somebody may ask, what about the other companies? Some of these companies, about 15 of them, fit into categories where there have been limited opportunities. Thereby, these companies have not been able to benefit from the program. What are some of the things which have been incorporated to increase participation? These things are things such as frequent meeting with CSR, Stilich, Aramark, and EBR Purchasing Department to be knowledgeable of pending future projects. Reformating the structure of the database such that when an opportunity is created, we can look specifically at companies that are a good fit for these opportunities rather than looking at a whole database of 85 individuals. Improved connection of companies to real opportunities. We've established a program by which there's a pre-bid meeting for most of these opportunities. And we encourage our companies to come to these pre-bid meetings such that they can know exactly what's going on. They can know the specifications. But on larger projects, they can actually be in the room with the companies that are going to be providing the services. The other one is the creation of a company profile. What this does is it captures what a company does well, such that we can better position them to be successful. So, these are some of the things that the Fair Share Program has done. But this evening, in support of the celebration of Black History Month and in alignment with this year's theme, Black Family Representation, Identity, and Diversity, the Fair Share Program wishes to highlight one of the companies in the program who is making a definite, positive, lasting mark in the Baton Rouge community. This company is Civil Solutions Consulting Group. This recognition is in support of their contributions related to the design of highly impactful educational facilities as well as contributions to the greater cause of the Baton Rouge community. Although a company, their company philosophy is one of we function as a family. A family committed to making a positive difference in the lives of the youth and adults of the Baton Rouge community. This evening, we have with us Mr. Eric Dexter, who is the Director of Business Development for Civil Solutions. As it relates to EBR, they have provided services for Jefferson Terrace Academy, the new school, the New University Terrace/Buchanan School, Audubon Elementary, New Driveway Design, Broadmoor High, and they've contributed to a lot of other programs and projects throughout the Baton Rouge area, which I will not mention at this time. When it comes to volunteering community service, their principal of the company, Mr. Coran Katz-Bord, he's the treasurer there, past president of American Society of Engineers, and goes on and on and on. Mr. Eric Dexter is on the BRAC Board, Chairman of Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and several other things that he's on. What's important here is through their participation on these community boards and committees and other projects, young African-American youth, both boys and girls for generations to come, can reference to the design work of Civil Solutions as an example of things which they can aspire to be, thereby supporting the mission of the celebration of Black History Month, the celebration of the accomplishments of African-Americans on the positive future of the community and the country. And one of the things they'll be doing before too long is a virtual meeting with the students at the school that they're helping to design, so these students can actually see and know that there was an African-American company that was doing this. But finally, Civil Solutions is a quality company which happens to be African-American-owned and operated. Right now, I have with us Mr. Eric Dexter, who is the Director of Business Development for Civil Solutions.
Thank you, John, and good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Narcisse. Just want to thank you for allowing me to come here today and for this recognition. But I'd be remiss if I didn't really give a lot of the attention to Mr. Smith, who John and I go back several years from serving on committees throughout the community. And one of the things that I think the Fair Share Program does best is it introduces firms like ours to other firms that existed for tens of years that are doing work with. like ours to other firms that existed for tens of years that are doing work within the school system. A few years ago, Mr. Smith convened a, almost a matchmaking session with other architects around, that do work with the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. And what that allowed us to do was go from table to table to introduce our businesses and the services we provide. From there, that branched off for doing one facility. That started off with the Jefferson Terrace Academy. Now that branched off to the New University in Buchanan. And of course, throughout the way, we've done stuff at Broadmoor High and Auden Elementary. But the thing is, it doesn't stop right there. It's exponential growth. We go from there to now doing a project at Southern University with the Valdery Center with Grace A. Barrett Architects, to working with Remsen Haley-Hurpin on environmental services with East Baton Rouge Parish. And so we've been able to grow from just a two or three-person firm to as many as 25 employees at one time, all hiring from within the city parish of Baton Rouge. And so for me, as a Business Development Director, that's economic development, that's economic growth, and it also provides an example for the youth within the school system of the type of work and opportunities that exist. So, again, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for, Mr. Smith, for doing the work that you do.
Okay, so we do have a request to speak from Board Member Lannis.
Yes, first, thank you, Mr. Smith, for the amazing work you've been doing with the Fair Share Program. I've heard nothing but great news, and also thank you for the work that you've done on behalf of our school district. However, I would like to make a request, and I don't know if that request is appropriate towards you, but I would like to see a full breakdown of all contracts across the board for the system. And again, I don't think that's something that you could possibly do, but I only ask this because I know, I think it was last year, the city did an equity study, and it showed that of the $1.4 billion in contracts that the city is currently allocating and giving out, less than 4% actually goes towards minorities. And I would like to just see that, do a comparative analysis across the board to ensure that we are putting our best foot forward as it regards our DBEs and our minority-run businesses.
I'm glad you said that, because currently, what I'm working on is something right now with Mr. Larry Williams and reaching out to the different department heads. Because in some cases, department heads actually engage companies, and that's not necessarily captured in what Mr. Williams does, but he and I can definitely get together and look at providing you with that information.
Okay. Mr. Chapman, President Chapman, excuse me.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. I wanted to give a little bit of historical perspective on this, because when several of us, Ms. Bernard, Ms. Ware Jackson, and Ms. Dyson was already on the Board, we contracted out what we called our DBE program. And when we came in, we asked for the very same contracts that you were talking about. And what we found is, is that it was not effective. We found that the deliverables under the contract weren't working, and so at least four of us voted to bring it in-house and to make sure that we gave more attention and more focus to it. And certainly, the work you've done over the years, it's a world better than it was when we first came here. And I appreciate the work that you're doing out there, and I'm interested in the breakdown of it as well. One of the challenges we had with the outside contract is we struggled with deliverables, but we struggled completely with data. We really didn't know how we were doing. And so, any information you can provide us on how we're doing with our Fair Share Program is greatly appreciated, and thank you for your service, Mr. Smith.
And I had a folder full of data, but somebody advised me not to read through all of that, so I'll be more than happy to send it to each one of you.
Thank you. Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Vice President Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate that, that information, and I agree with my colleagues. I'd love to see a more in-depth information. And if you, if you could, you could email us, you know, that thing that they advised you not to bring before us tonight. But I just want to thank you for that, and the Fair Share Program has been something that's been very near and dear. So hearing the accomplishments, you know, on a, on a regular basis is much appreciated. And, but I just had to also congratulate Mr. Dexter, you know? I know you're, you do fine work, you know? And I'm so glad that we're, we're able to recognize that tonight. So we appreciate you and congratulations.
And the reason Mr. Dexter's company was chosen was that many of our students don't think of the design side when they're thinking about things to do. He represents that, but he also represents all of the other companies in the program who are providing quality work at a quality price. So he's not the only one. He's one of many. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Ware Jackson. Board Member Golday.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Dexter, and also Mr. Smith for a job well done. The only question I had is, as you go through the data.
Yes.
Could you please be clear in it how it is compiled? For instance, you know, if we led a major contract for construction, and, and that contractor has four or five subcontractors, some of which are, does that get counted in the Fair Share Program? How does that work?
Yes, actually, CSR, Stilich, and we work very closely with them, there is a page in the document that says, "List the minority contractors, the fair share, the DBEs that you are working with," and also list the amount of dollars that were actually, that they will be receiving from that contract. So we have that data broken down basically by project that we can provide to you, so you can see it project by project, but then also get an aggregate over the total dollar amounts that are in.
And how about, because I know Aramark hires a lot of local contractors to do the night work and things like that. Is Aramark in that same program where that's counted up?
Now, the night custodial work for Aramark is not necessarily captured in what I do. They do capture it in their report of minority participation. But as a prime example, we just did a project the other day, and I talked about how we put projects together. And the project came in, like 56%, of the dollars amount for that project actually went to companies in the Fair Share Program. So they also created a spreadsheet by project that will show you who bid it, who received it, and the breakdown by project, which we now put more than one project together. So that's, matter of fact, that's in here, but they told me don't pull all that.
So why isn't the Aramark local contractors included in, in the fair share numbers?
The, because to be included in the numbers? One of the things we do is, who are the companies that are in the Fair Share Program? That's one of the things that we look at. The second one we look at is, sometimes companies say, "I don't want to be counted in your numbers." So those are the kinds of things that.
But that destroys, that makes it very difficult for us to understand.
I agree. But here's what I'll say, we can do that. I'll get with Aramark, we will, we will add their numbers into what we're doing.
Yes, that would be very, that would be very interesting, and I don't know of any other major contracts that we have like that. That's the one that stands out to me, but I would really like to know how much of the Aramark money is going to local contractors. That would be a very interesting number for us.
And Star is another one. They have a company in the Fair Share Program that does a lot of work with them, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. So that is in here, but we can provide that information from Aramark.
And even if they're not in, if they're minority, but not in the fair share, would that be counted, or just in the fair share?
We can, we can begin to look at all of that, such that we get a better picture of what we do. We can look at all of that.
Mr. Board Member Golday, we can actually provide you maybe just for all the companies on how they make their choices? Maybe we could show the Board metrics of how they all do that.
Correct.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the effort and appreciate pulling together the data for us.
We'll have it for you by next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I see no other requests to speak. Oh, but you know what? I did have a question. As a small business owner myself, I actually participated in the mayor's disparity study as a subcontractor, and I went and I spoke with different businesses. And so quite naturally, it caused me to think about, well, what are we doing in EBR? Separate from that disparity study, though, I did observe how the city parish has improved its procurement process, and the transparency is not, ease of access. When they updated the website, they started sending out lists, like some of the, there are certain agencies that help small businesses keep up with different opportunities, like the state does it, and some other, other businesses that focus on helping in that way. And so it caused me to look at what, what we're doing along those lines with EBR and procurement in general, because sometimes maybe just the ease of access to the information. I know that we do, by law, have to advertise in the Advocate was the medium we chose to use, because it's the higher circulation paper, newspaper, but what about opportunities online in terms of, do we have anything on the EBR school's website? Things of that nature.
Right now, we do not, but what I think could probably happen is, because there is a fair share of space out there, we could do what we do when I send the email to everyone and could potentially say, "Here is an opportunity. If you are interested, email me and I can provide them with additional information." We might be able to put something like that on the webpage. We wouldn't want to bog the webpage down with a lot of initial detail, but we may be able to say, "Why don't we kind of put things out there so the companies can hear more about it and make them aware of, go out there every so often just to see what's going on?"
Okay, like maybe is that a communications department kind of question? Like, since you have to send notice out through the Advocate, maybe a link to that same kind of notice can be put on the website? And of course, not the whole, in terms of the webpage, and I'm probably getting into the weeds, but I would like to see more about making it more accessible, because people, even with the Advocate, they're going more digital than, than paper. And sometimes people will go still to the, to whatever section of the Advocate for that, but it would be good. I know sometimes people think about, well, you know, I want to do business with the city parish, they go to the website, especially newer businesses, that's getting a feel for how they can get into contracting.
But I'll look into that, and I'll email everybody back and.
Thank you.
See what that looks like.
Mr. Board Member Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I had an opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation with Mr. Smith about this particular program, and some of those numbers that you guys have asked for, like it gives you a breakdown. I think my push is still the same as, as my colleague about, there's a difference between being the primary contractor and the subcontractor, and when you're talking about the dollar amount that exists within the program. So my push to Mr. Smith was just to encourage more minority-owned businesses to be the actual primary contractor and not have to come in on the subcontract side of the contracts. But the other thing to Ms. Collins's point is that what the state of Louisiana does in the procurement department is, any business can go on and register and talk about their expertise, and every time there's a hit or particular procurement opportunity that relates to that related field, they get the notification. So that's an access piece that's easily, like the state already has a system that's in place, so maybe EBR can adapt something similar to the state to increase the access so these minority companies are aware of the type of business we're looking for. So, thank you.
We'll definitely research all of those, all of those kinds of things. And, but to the point, on a major project like a new school that's being built, there is a form within that where that contractor, and even on other projects, does have to list their minority participation. So we can, we pull that information out. And EBR has a goal of 20%, just.
Okay.
Oh, by the way.
All right, well, thank you very much. Seeing no other questions. Thank you.
I want to congratulate again Mr. Dexter here and their company for the work they've done on designing our schools.
Yes, thank you.
And I think some of you have seen some of the work, so again, it's a quality company that happens to be African-American.
Yes, thank you so much. And has he, has he had an opportunity to be a primary contractor, a general contractor on some projects?
I'll have to let him explain what they do.
All right.
And that'll answer that question.
I put you all on the spot, huh?
No, those are all good questions, all good questions. And so, and one of the things I'll say is that I'm also on the Small Business Outreach Program Team with, committee with the Move VR Program. And those are questions that come up all the time, is why don't we get more folks that are priming? Well, it depends on the line of business that you're in. For us, as a civil engineering firm that does civil design, when you're constructing vertical construction in new schools, it's typically going to be the architecture firm that is the primary contractor with the school system. And then we'll be contracted directly with the architecture firm. And that doesn't mean you can't find a woman-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned architecture firm, because that can exist as well. So for us, we usually come in with the architect, unless there is a sole source or direct appointment with us to do some drainage studies, for instance, or stormwater management. That can be done without directly going through a, an architect or something like that. So that's usually why we may be a subconsultant. However, you know, that, that is a question that comes up quite often, why we, why we can't get to that point. Sometimes it's, we get good enough, but not well, you know, well enough, you know? So all relevant questions, I appreciate that, though.
Thank you very much.
My last response to that is, we do have one firm in the Fair Share Program, Chasm Architect, who is the lead architect on a couple of projects here in EBR.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other requests to speak, we now move forward to Item D1, Item for Consideration. Grant the Louisiana Art and Science Museum. Consideration of a request for the approval of the Louisiana Art and Science Museum Grant Partnership to Provide Live Educator-led STEAM-Based Programs, LASM 360 Virtual Voyages. Virtual Field Trips to Identify High-Need Students in East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Can I get a motion? All right. First by Darius, and second by Ms. Board Member Ware Jackson, I'm sorry, Board Member Lannis and Board Member Ware Jackson. Any discussion? Any comment from the public? Seeing none, any? Oh, okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
How y'all doing? This microphone is too high for me, I'm short. How you doing tonight? I want to first start off with, some of this stuff that we have for consideration, I really hope and, I hope and pray that y'all bring all these items to the Board. I also want to send a nice shout-out to EBR Fair Share Update, because that was beautiful. I really appreciate when they give a nice appreciation to the people that we have with our school system that actually do great and wonderful work. What I don't like is that we actually got four new positions, and none of them people are individuals that would contribute to our tax dollars for our state, which means our school system will be missing that money. Now, what exactly in God's name do you think we supposed to do with that? That mean we gonna have another shortfall. Then on top of that, for me to learn about all the people that have been demoted.
Sister Coranda, we got to keep the comment germane to the subject. Thank you, thank you very much.
But I'm gonna reclaim my time, because you just took up some of my time, Ms. Collins, Vice President, Madam Chair. A lot about, a lot of this stuff that y'all have talked about, such as the council, how much money is, how much money is that gonna cost us? Because as of right now, my school does not have a nurse, and Ms. Dr. Narcisse actually told me that we was gonna get that.
Sister Coranda.
Now, with this policy for JBCE.
I'm gonna have to cut your mic off if you don't keep it with the grant.
I'm going back to it, this policy.
Keep it with the grant.
Yes, ma'am. Reclaiming my time. My policy on JBCE, I really hope that y'all actually provide that so that we can actually see. Isn't that right here? We talking about items for consideration, right?
No.
Okay, well, this grant for Louisiana Art and Science Museum, are they gonna contribute to making sure that the children are gonna actually have access to art and science? Right now, our school system don't have a lot of art and science teachers. Right now, we actually have 88 vacancies that need to be filled.
Miss Coranda.
This is in relation to the grant.
The grant, not the teaching positions, the grant.
Just the grant. If you allow me to tie it in, please, I promise you, I'm gonna reclaim my time here. Now, the Louisiana Art and Science Museum, that is supposed to give, make our children well-rounded. How exactly are we gonna make them well-rounded if we don't have the teacher? So what are we gonna do to ensure that we actually have a warm body, to ensure that our children learn about the arts and science? After all, we're supposed to have a lot of STEAM and STEM programs, but we don't have people to teach them. So I'm just curious on if, with this Art and Science Museum, are we gonna have real warm bodies that are gonna teach these children art and science? Because we can't keep saying we're gonna get money or give money, and we don't actually produce. I'm asking for receipts, that's what I would like. And I really hope and pray that y'all think about that, because art and science is something that every child. art and science is something that every child in this school system can benefit from. But if we don't have the people to teach it, then what good was it? I mean, after all, we just said we wanted to be a council of great schools, right? We wanted to join that. Art and science grant, what schools are gonna be impacted by this? What schools are gonna actually receive that? Will Northeast Elementary and High receive that? I mean, after all, that is the school the furthest away from this building, the furthest away from civilization.
That's your time, Miss Cora.
Y'all had kept talking to one time.
Miss Cora, you're out of order.
Well, no problem at all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reclaim my time, but I greatly appreciate.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Okay, we see one coming.
Hello, if you mind, I'm Maria Harmon. I just wanted to express how thankful we were, how this program was going for the Fair Share Update, and just wanted to say we really appreciate Mr. Adam Smith's leadership in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right, back to the board. Okay, let's see, request to speak. Board Member Lannas.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Collins. Just for clarity, because I'm looking at the recommended action and it says that this is a virtual, correct?
Correct.
So, that means that this can go to any student throughout our parish, virtually?
Well, let's
That's connected to partnership?
Yes, let's, it did mention identified high-needs students, so if you could explain for us, perhaps, Board Member Lannas, is that what we would like?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is for the elementary schools, and they're making their plan right now, the museum is, because they are thinking they're going to start it off and with astronomy for fourth-grade students, go across the CIR schools, and then as soon as they finish with that, then they'll move to another grade level and do all the other grade levels, offer them to teachers. And many of our schools go to field trips to the museum, and they're unable to do that right now. So, this grant will allow them to have virtual field trips, and the teachers can sign up.
And you did say the CIR schools?
CIR schools, elementary at this point.
So, these are specifically for high-needs students that have been identified throughout our network?
The CIR schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Ware Jackson?
I wanted to thank Nita Mitchell over at ESM and Kim Fossey and that whole STEAM team for putting this together. And this is gonna be phenomenal. Nita and I are both star lovers. And so, I know she, she knows that this just tickles me, you know. I love the way the arts and science come together. And this is gonna be a wonderful thing at any level, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. And it's gonna be great going into these high-need schools, and they'll be able to do this virtually. So, even when they're not in the classroom physically, you know, they can get together in the cloud, so to speak. So, it's very appropriate. And just want to give my heartfelt thanks to them for putting this together, because science is an area that is, you know, that our kids lots of times feel a little intimidated by. So, anytime that you can bring some, some beauty and some fun into it, it'll, it'll really help them in the long run. So, thanks again.
Yes, and it will be teacher-led.
And thank you so much for putting this together, because writing this, I know, is no easy chore. So, thanks a lot.
It is virtual, but it'll be teacher-led. So, they're gonna have their instructors.
Exactly, exactly. They'll provide that as well. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the board? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote.
Thank you. We now move forward with item D2, another partnership grant, consideration for a request for the approval to seek and serve as district lead for Louisiana Department of Education's Pathways to Prosperity Fast Forward Grant to Increase Career and College Opportunities for Students. Can I get a motion? Board Member Bernard, and then seconded by Board Member Howard.
All right, good evening, everyone, again. Tonight, we're pleased to announce that we would like to participate in the Department of Education's Fast Forward Initiative Planning Grant. And so, kind of define what that is. The Louisiana Department of Education and Board of Regents recently announced the Fast Forward Initiative, which is designed to allow regional districts to develop pathways that allow a student to complete an associate's degree by the time they exit high school, which is a two-year college degree consisting of about 60 credit hours. And currently, our district has two programs which already follow the tenets of this initiative. The first was the IBMP Tech Program at Terra High School, which ends in an associate's degree in computer science. And the second is the Early College Academy, which your, the board approved in the spring of last year at CTEC, and Ms. Dan can give you some details on that. And to kind of share what this looks like, in consultation with our partner schools, charter school teams, BRAC businesses, post-secondary institutions, our request tonight is that we move forward by serving as the lead district for Region Two, which makes up most of the Florida parishes in conjunction with also West Baton Rouge and Iberville, and that we apply for the $50,000 planning grant to the Department of Education. So, looking at the implementation side of this, we are currently working in the background and have been through Ms. Dan and our CTEC team and also our CTE team to begin working with all of the partnerships, along with their advisory boards, to begin the process of collecting information for this process. And once we do that, if approved, you know, by the Department of Education, we would submit on behalf of Region Two, all of the districts and partnerships therein, and look at a grant to create the pathways and explore what those would look like, because the region is gonna have to submit a variety of pathways to use moving forward that LDOE and Board of Regents would approve. And then finally, kind of monitoring this, once we go through that process, and if Bessie and Board of Regents approve the pathways, that's when we would go into our recruitment and promotional phase and start recruiting kids into the pathways, and make a parents and students really see this as a great opportunity. And again, some of those examples of the pathways could be things like an associate's in applied programming and network engineering, and associates in healthcare, and associates in process technology, and things along that nature. So, again, tonight, we're simply saying, on behalf of Region Two, we've kind of been asked and we volunteered to submit to the Department of Education that planning grant application.
Any questions from the board? I see request to speak. Yes, Board Member Bernard.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Dan and Mr. Nikke, the CTEC staff and the CTE staff. What an opportunity for our students and what an honor to you all to be able to participate in this, in this capacity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Board Member, Board President Tapman.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Mr. Nikke, just so I'm clear in what I read through, this doesn't cost us anything. You're asking us for the ability to apply for a grant that we could end up getting for $50,000 to support the programs that you discussed, correct?
Yes, sir. And our intent was, since we're applying on behalf of a variety of districts and we're gonna kind of be the fiscal agent for that, we just wanted to make sure you're aware we're doing it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Dyson. No, I'm sorry, it moved up. Board Member Ware Jackson?
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Thank you, guys, for doing this. You know, I love this taking place over at CTEC and at Terra, but the thing that I'm really excited about is that the district takes the lead in this, you know. So, anytime that I see, you know, we're, we're leading not just our, our little crew, but, you know, some, the territory, so to speak, widens, it's, it's a good thing. So, I applaud you for taking on the challenge and writing the grant, and hopefully, everything will go as we think it will, and we'll be leading in this. So, we appreciate it. Oh, how you like my mask? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Nikke.
Thank you. Board Member Dyson?
I too appreciate that we're taking the leadership role in this, and I'm excited about this coming together. I always have to talk, though, about, so, we've got some great opportunities for most of our high schoolers. We have two high schools that geographically just cannot get back and forth to CTEC. And so, that's Northeast High School and Woodlawn High School. And I would very much like for the students to have the opportunities at those two schools to have these associate degrees upon graduation as well. So, what are we doing to ensure that those two schools have opportunities for this as well? Because we don't want to leave anyone out.
Okay, so, in the planning, we've been speaking with RPCC, North Shore Technical College, and BRCC. And so, it is regional. So, we're also gonna have the other districts, such as West Feliciano has to have opportunities, Iberville. So, when we're looking at the region as a whole, we're working across the board with all the community colleges. There are, there's a model where the kids come to CTEC, that's what we have, half a day, half a day at their homeschool, half a day at BRCC, and then a full day at BRCC across their four years. But with the other areas, such as Northeast, what we've been discussing, and it has not been a complete plan, is that some of the programs would be held at the homeschool for their freshman and sophomore year, and then junior and senior year, they would go to BRCC, or to RPCC, or to a satellite campus. So, it's, it's, it's supported across the region to figure out a way to make sure that all kids have the opportunity for this, no matter if they're urban or rural.
Yeah. So, when you consider where CTEC is and where BRCC is, it's about the same for Northeast and for Woodlawn. So...
Well, there's satellite campuses of BRCC, there's satellite campuses of RPCC, and they're willing to work through.
Yeah.
RPCC in particular is with Woodlawn. I know that, because I've had a lot of conversations on trying to figure out what their Gonzales campus, how that could look. Northeast, we don't have the exact mapped-out plan, but we're not gonna leave anyone out. We're gonna have to have, as a region, a solution for every child to have this opportunity. Now, whether they take the opportunity will be different, but our, our goal is to make sure every child has the opportunity.
And then comes the, the educational component, too, our guidance counselors and staff, so that they can encourage these opportunities, and just to make sure that we're doing PD with them about these programs. And, and we should hopefully be, you know, putting this over on each school's website, so that parents and students can see what the opportunities are. I don't know if we've ever gotten, had success with formalizing a partnership with ABC Contractors that's right there on Highland Road.
ABC is gonna be one of the partners in the discussions.
Very good.
Yes, they're, they're gonna be involved.
Very good.
The unions are involved.
Because they're close and they can come by, not to Northeast, but at least, you know, maybe you can find something else for Northeast as well. So...
I will make sure that we take care of Northeast.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Board Member Howard?
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Thank you, guys, for participating in this program. I've been doing a lot of work and studying of this, this potential pilot program with the state from a national perspective. And I just want to encourage you guys in the planning stages of it, that you really seek out the voice of students, to understand what students are interested in and connected with, and then how does those interests lead to high-demand, high-wage jobs? Because a lot of things, and I think in the original fault of our rollout of pathway programs from a state's perspective, is that we just rolled out a lot of programs, but none of them were deemed high-wage, high-demand. So, we have all of these programs, but they're not rendering any successful outcomes to actually move kids out of poverty. And so, having a real conversation, I think maybe focus groups with students to kind of see what their interests are and how you can help them lead to actual high-demand, high-wage jobs that can actually put us, you know, at the top of actually being selected for this grant. Because right now, we're just applying. So, we have to be really innovative in our thinking and the voice that we bring into the application to make sure that we're awarded. So, appreciate you, guys, for taking the foot forward and partnering with the local people to take care of.
Thank you. Board Member Godey?
Yes, thank you for all the work on this. I have the privilege of being able to sit on the LaSTEM Advisory Council set up by the state legislature, and that council is chaired by Dr., I just, I just lost her name, Kim Hunter. I just lost her name, I'm sorry. Dr. Hunter, who's the head of the Board of Regents, and with a lot of representation from the LDOE through that. And this is a high-priority project for the LaSTEM Committee. Senator Hewitt is the main driver behind this. And it is being set up by, when you talk about Region Two, I assume you're talking about the Workforce Commission Region Two? Because there are lots of different regions for different things, and for, I assume that's what you're talking about.
It's ours is the LDOE region, but I think they match pretty much.
Yes, it's the same thing. And so, that, you know, there will be STEM coordinators being set up with offices in each region. And so, this is gonna tie into it, to address some of what Board Member Howard was talking about. All of these things are gonna be focused on what is the demand in that region, as to how it's gonna go. So, I am highly complimentary of this effort, and I hope you the best of success, because there is a lot of state push behind this. And anything I can do to help through my service on that council, I'd be happy to do. Thank you.
Okay, and seeing no other requests to speak from our colleagues, I just want to say I agree with what my other colleagues have had to say. I particularly think that once you start looking at the high demand and then also polling students, that will help with the recruitment of the traditional students, because those are the ones that most need. I know we've been struggling with recruitment of these in CTEC with the traditional population, because it's harder to reach. I mean, but if we get that input and then also give them the education that, look, these are high-demand, this is a real opportunity, that would really help. And so, then, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Oops, okay, keep it germane to the agenda item, Miss Cora Cora.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, my, Madam Vice President, I'm gonna stay directly on the partnerships and grants. How many children of disability, with disabilities are actually allowed in CTEC? And how many children with disabilities have access to these programs that are funded by this, these type of grants? Children with disabilities do not get a chance to participate in it, because our school system fails to make the proper accommodations. My child can actually participate in this program if you made it accessible for him. Him and other children just like him. We have a major shortage right now in our state for nurses, EMTs, and American Sign Language interpreters. Our school system right now only have one, one American Sign Language interpreter, and she works with my child. My child would be able to tell more people how he feel if he was able to have that instructor more than what he have her. These are the type of programs that we need to have, and we need to make sure that our schools, especially in Northeast Elementary and High, Ms. Lannas, in your district, that don't have access to CTEC and programs like that have it. Our northern parish, part of the parish, is suffering. It's suffering because they cannot get to CTEC. I listen to Ms. Dyson talk all the time about mental health. We don't have any program in our CTEC that address giving us mental health texts. That's another certification that we can receive, especially when our state right now is in a mental health crisis. I mean, after all, after attending the school board meetings, I be in a mental health crisis. So, I'm just asking that we look at So I'm just asking that we look at the jobs in which our state need. We could have an associate's degree towards education, considering that we have a major shortage of teachers. We have a major shortage of special education teachers, and we don't have that as an associate degree option. So I think that if we're going to bring in someone from out of state and pay him $255,000, I think that we need to make it a priority that we have these type of things addressed in our programs. So I think that it would behoove us to apply for these grants, but also make these grants and these programs 100% accessible to those children under IDEA and American Disabilities Act. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Any other public comment? Seeing no other comment, we return to the board. Any other board comment? Seeing none, please, Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you, moving forward now to Item D4, Request for Proposal Regarding Reapportionment. Hey, oh, I'm sorry, I, thank you, I skipped one. Section D, yes. We move forward, excuse me, to Section D3, Policy J BCE, Recommended Action, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of School Board Policy, J BCE. Can I, oh, Public School Choice Policy. Can I get a motion? First by Board Member Baloo, and seconded by Board Member Howard, oh, excuse me, Board Member Lanis. Any comment from the board? Okay, President Tatman.
Attorney Shamlin, I just had a question for you. This is required by state and federal law, correct? Can you give just a, can you hit it a lick?
Yes, thank you, President Tatman. I had some recent consultation with federal program staff. We're audited once a year from a federal program standpoint, and we discovered that our policy needed to be updated, essentially streamlined, to align with the law. One of the requirements of the audit is that our policy actually matched the law. So we discovered we need to do that. What this actually does is it, it does several things. It updates terminology, it aligns the eligibility requirements, it eliminates the ineligible requirements, which are actually tantamount to the law, and it gives the superintendent the ability to develop regulations and rules around this, some flexibility. So if the law changes, we don't necessarily change the policy every time. So we actually streamline the policy, line it with the law, and bring it up to speed for auditing purposes and also for practical purposes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Any other board comment or questions? Okay, now to the public, any public comment? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coranda Coyle.
Good evening, just for clarification, before I get to running my mouth, are we talking about Policy J BCE, or are we talking about the reapportionment?
We on the Policy J BCE, I made a misspeak earlier.
Okay, um, I really and truly do not agree with us, given our superintendent, the, well, which superintendent first? Would we be actually given permission to, to actually be able to have authority, like a dictator, to be able to change any policies? Would it be Dr. Sito Narciso? Or would it be the new chief of academic officer, what is his name? C. Michael Robertson? Would it be him? So first, I think we need to actually give a clarification on that. Which one would actually be making that, that decision? Second, I don't think either one of them should be able to make that decision, because neither one of them know anything about this school system yet. So how can we allow them to make any kind of changes as regards to our policies when right now, our Senate Education Committee and our House Education Committee, along with Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, has been making a lot of changes when it comes to policy right now during this novel pandemic? We cannot continue to have people have total authority that lack the experience and knowledge. That hurts the children. One of the things that our board is supposed to be about is making changes for the betterment of our children. And what we keep doing is stifling and crippling them. We're hurting them in a manner in which we are making them not profitable for our state. They will never be a part of the workforce as long as we continue to allow people that lack experience and knowledge. So I ask that each of our board members, especially the ones that have their hands folded and arms folded, to actually think about the children. Because after all, you're supposed to represent your constituents, and I am one in every last one of your districts. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment? Now, back to the board. Okay, thank you, yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone, I'm Maria Harmon, y'all can hear me? Um, I'm, I'm just concerned about school choice and how it's manifested in this school district. So we have an opportunity to really, like, hone in and really make accountability measures a bit more effective. We're already spending over $100 million on charter schools for the 2020-2021 school year, which was based off of a report that the Chief Financial Officer did for the school district. And we have about, what, over 30 charter schools operating, 20 of which are under the state control, 10 of which are under the, the school district. But really, you don't have any direct oversight, especially over the state ones. And a lot of them aren't performing that well. So are we really using our tax dollars to the most effective use? $100 million. Now, I understand that these dollars follow the kid, per se, but before it hits the kid, it got to go through all these different miniscule administrations that's over each charter network. So please, for the love of God, think about the children, think about adequate ways to best use our tax dollars, because we trusted you as our elected officials to be the fiduciary stewards to this board and to our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, any other public comment? Seeing none, coming back to the board. I see no further, no further comments from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you, now, moving forward to Item D4, Request for Proposal Regarding Reapportionment and the Recommended Action is Consideration of a Request for the Authorization of the Superintendent and Staff to Issue a Request for Proposals, to Seek Proposals, to Provide for the Development of a Board Reapportionment and Redistricting Plan. Do I have a motion? Board Member Tatman, seconded by Board Member Ware Jackson. Public, uh, excuse me, any board comment? I see, okay, Board President Tatman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I wanted to share with you this agenda item and give you a little sense of reapportionment and what the process might look like, and why I think it's important for us to get out early on it. As we all know, there's a census that is, has been taken or is finished, or there's some issues going on with it. But at some point, at least in my conversations with legislative leaders, we expect to get the data sometime in the fall. And so since every school board, every city council, the Louisiana Legislature, and so many bodies are out there, are going to be out there doing reapportionment, I thought, and since some of us have been through it a few times, that we would get an early start. Obviously, this is complicated stuff. For those of you, for those of you who've been with it, you've sat down with the consultants before, you've gone through the, the changes in the precincts. We have obligations under the Justice Department to ensure that our districts are fair and equitable, that there's no dilution of voter strength, all of those things. If you've sat down with those individuals, those consulting firms with the software, it's pretty amazing what they have. Moving one precinct, or they don't like to, but cutting a precinct in half in order to meet the district requirements that we need are a big part of that consultant. So all this is, is the RFQ, to go out and look for a company, find a good one and hire them early so that we're not behind the eight ball when other jurisdictions are trying to hide them, hire them, and we can't get them, or we can't get their full attention. And so that is why I'm bringing this as early as I am. I would tell you, we're not going to engage in this process until at least after the summer. And just a little side story, right now, they're trying to figure out what they do about Lake Charles and their numbers, because their numbers are dramatically different right now in certain areas than they were before. And remember, we break this down by precinct. This isn't about just a district, but it's about precincts and subprecincts. And so I want to make sure we get an early start, and that is why I brought it before the board. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to make those opening comments.
Thank you, Board Member Bernard.
Mr. Tatman, you said the census available, info will be available this fall?
I'm told, I'm, I'm in my conversations with legislative leaders who will be doing their reapportionment process, their plan is to have a legislative session, a special legislative session sometime in the fall to address it. And I think they're probably a little more in tune as to when those numbers will come down than, than a school board is. But, you know, whether it's fall or not, I mean, just to further answer that question, remember that next year, there's an, it'll be an election year, not this year, but next year, there's an election year. And so it's important for people to know what precincts they're in, what districts they may want to run for, with, you know, where they want candidates to be and that sort of thing. Because in my opinion, we're going to see some shifts in terms of population in our area. And frankly, if you ask me, I'd like to see more compact districts that were more about where the, where the schools were and where the students go and that sort of thing. Because we're, we have a couple of districts that kind of wind and turned and bent around, you know. For whatever that's worth, it's very difficult to do. And so it looks like sometime in the fall, if it's pushed back, in this proposal, we would still have the consultant engaged. We don't pay them until they actually do the work.
Right, right, okay, so I'm, I'm in favor of engaging the contractor before their dance card is full, whoever it might be. But you said RFQ, and the proposal says RFP, so.
I'm sorry, I was a misspeak.
What, tell me what the difference would be, because.
Yes, I can tell you, RFQ is more about the cost of actually performing a task. And RFP is a Request for Proposals, where you ask companies to submit themselves in comparison to others. And so actually, the appropriate term would be an RFP in this, in this case.
RFP, so we would choose the lowest bidder, or?
Uh, we would choose the best submission. Not necessarily lowest bidder, but the person that can actually meet the needs of what we need.
So it's really not that different from an RFQ in this situation either? Okay, all right, well, thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Seeing no other comment from the board, any public comment regarding this item? Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, the board, superintendent, I'm hearing change. You all are making me so proud. I'm excited about the next chapter. I am Dr. Tony Jones for United Faith Leaders. I spent some time after the election speaking with our membership, and everyone is excited about the next chapter in EBR. I just came to salute you all, this meeting, the atmosphere, thank you. I'll simply say this, onward and forward, thank you.
Okay, because I was, I thank you for the, the nice words, but let's always remember to keep it germane to the agenda item. I got down on Ms. Coyle, I have to let you know, sir, as well, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coyle.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, and I greatly appreciate you tonight, especially Board President, Mr. Tatman. I really, I really appreciate how informative you was just now. With the re, with the reapportionment, will we be increasing the amount of board seats? Because right now, if we look at the chart that shows how many schools each board member represents, Mr. Howard and Mr. Lanis represent the most. Then it would be Board Member Collins. That's not fair to them. Mr. Howard has like 13 schools. Mr. Howard and Mr. Lanis both have the juvenile detention center. Ms. Bernard has three. How is that fair? How is that equity? How is that helping our children? One thing that I, I love about Ms. Dyson is that she always reflect on how we want our children to not make it home at dinnertime from school, because they're being bused across the country. Wouldn't, wouldn't it make sense if we actually had board members that represented only about three or four schools? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that make it more equitable for you to actually be able to hear and represent your constituents truly? Wouldn't it actually make it easier for us to get some work done that actually benefit our children? Right now, our children are suffering, and I tell you that every day. We have over 4,000 children with disabilities, and yet I am the only one that manages to make it here to speak for our children. And I bring my child here faithfully. I put us at risk, ADA risk, because we continue to fail to read the comments, which is a violation of ADA. And all our, all our employees that fall under ADA, their comments are not being heard neither. So I just ask that if we're going to reapport, reapportion it, that we actually bring back the 11 seats? Or bring back 13, or give us 13 seats? Another even number, but actually make it equitable across the field where each school board member have the same number of schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you, any other public comment?
Hello, everyone, I'm Maria Harmon. I was just coming up here to just really encourage that the board chooses a consultant that's fully knowledgeable and aware and knows what equity looks like as far as representing our voting electorate across this school district. Before, the board was originally 11 members. We're, we're just hoping that we're going that direction after the census has been taken, that we have a full representation of restoring the board to 11 members. We feel that that is adequate in a sense of fully representing each voter in this school district. We have areas in this school district that doesn't even have neighborhood schools, like in Gardere. That's an issue. You know, that's something that many people take, pays attention to, is very concerning, and they don't feel like it's real equity. Some people's choice is an adequate, direct-run, traditional public school in their neighborhood that's fully adequate, adequate to educate our children and impose its quality at the end of the day. So we're just hoping that we can restore the board, thank you.
Thank you, any other public comments, seeing none, back to the board. I see Board President Tatman.
I'm on the mic a lot tonight. I, I failed to mention a couple of things about the reapportionment process. I, I got a little ahead of myself. You know, we, we reapportion ourselves, and so we really make the decisions about how many board seats we want, that sort of thing. I believe there were seven plans last time, there was at least five. But, but there were seven different plans. Any board member can put up a plan if they like. What usually happens is that board members tend to coalesce around a particular plan, but it is an incredibly transparent process. Every board member meets with the consultant. If board members are interested in sharing their plan, they'll share it with other board members to try to see if we can figure it out and to really address some of the same things we've been hearing, making sure that maybe the schools are distributed, or the attendance lines, or those sorts of things. There is provisions in there that provide that we have to take, I believe. provide that we have to take, I believe, full-page ads out, and that, it's, and the advocate for each of those plans, a certain, maybe, it may even be twice, but we'll check the law on it. But it's, it's out there. It's a very, very transparent process. There are some things, though, that we really don't control, and that is the makeup of the individual districts relative to Justice Department guidance on the makeup of those districts. And that is why it's so critical to have a consultant who helps us work through that. So, I, Jill can speak more to it, cause she's been through a couple of reapportionments, as I appreciate it. But I know the, the ones that I've been through, there were always a number of plans, and there was always a great deal of discussion around that and trying to find consensus about ways that we can work together to find the best plan moving forward. But since we reapportion ourselves, we can do just about anything we want. We can get bigger, we can get smaller. You know, I wouldn't like to see an even number, but we could probably do that too. It's not a rule against it. But I just wanted to share those points that I didn't make earlier, so I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, board president. Board member Baloo.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And just a quick comment, and I'm sure my colleagues would say the same thing. While there are several schools that reside within my district, I represent all the schools within our system, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, board member Baloo, and board member Evelyn Ware Jackson.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Mr. Baloo, for, for saying that. I share your sentiment, and I'm, I'm sure all of us realize that, you know, those, the voting, those precincts and those lines represent the voters who actually bring us into office. I don't know that the number of schools that happen to fall into those areas could ever really be evened out, because we have so few schools in the southern part of the district and a whole lot more in the northern part. So, if we were to try to align lines to capture an equal number of schools, we'd have some really wild-looking districts, wouldn't we? And they would be extremely large for, for, for some of us. But I'm looking forward to, to the work, and I just wanna make sure that the people understand, even if, if Mr. Shamlin needs to, you know, just explain that, how, how that actually works, and it's, it's not about where the property of the school district is. Would you mind touching that, please?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I actually understand the question, but I will say that, that the pro, that's okay. And I, I didn't mean that that way, Ms. Ware Jackson.
You know you did, no?
But I do owe you one for all the times you asked me about policy.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify a couple of things. I, I'm sitting here reading some of the facts, and, and I've been studying up on the reapportionment process last week, because I knew this was coming up, just trying to get some general information. Reapportionment may also include redistricting. They're two different things. Reapportionment is the number of members that sits on the board. The minimum number can be five, the maximum 15, okay? But you can also, in this process, redistrict. And so, where the consultant comes in, and my understanding, I, I wasn't general counsel when this was last done, so this is all still new to me. But my understanding is that your consultant can do a number of things for you. They can conduct demographic studies, they can use other demographic studies, they can look at numbers, including, but not, not necessarily exclusive of the census, and they can then make recommendations to the board about what a plan should look like. My understanding last time is, you said there were a number of plans. Someone on the board will have to be brave enough to propose a plan to be adopted by member, by members of the board. That can be harrowing, from what I understand, and it was in the past. But, but it is a process that the board completely undertakes. You have complete control of it. Whatever plan you adopt has to align with the state law and policy, otherwise, it's not, it's not considered valid. And that's where I come in, and that's where any other, anyone else we secure from a legal standpoint will come in, make sure that the plan actually lines up with the law. But redistricting and redrawing of lines is what I think you're referring to. Just kinda give you all some basic information. Doesn't necessarily have to, to line up with attendant zone lines or school district lines, but it is a part of the process. And it's all based on what information your consultant brings to you. And also, I think, from what I understand, and Mr. Tatman clarified this for me, the consultant will work with each board member to gather information before making any proposals or any recommendations. So, there'll, there'll be a lot of input from you and from your constituents.
So, then my question is, since you've mentioned the difference between reapportionment and redistricting, I'm wondering if we have, is, is this the correct term that we're using? Cause we're not looking at, for reapportionment, you said you can, that's when you're looking to change the number of seats?
Yes, ma'am. The language of this item will allow us to secure a firm to do one or both.
Oh, good.
And so, my understanding is that the, the consultant we hire will, will look at a lot of information, and once he or she or their, or the group seeks and gathers information and data from, from this group and from constituents, will then say, here are your options. It may include just reapportionment, and/or it may include some redistricting, depending on what they find. But it's all based on data.
Okay, good. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Board member Lanis.
Thank you. I just have a real brief question, and either President Tatman or board member Dyson can answer this, because I think you two are the only ones that were on the board in the early 2000s. Oh, I'm sorry, so either Ms. Bernard can chime in, or board member Ware Jackson. But my question is, I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind shrinking the size of the board the first time, cause I do understand that there were several school breakaways, such as Zachary, Baker, and Central, and I was just trying to get an understanding. Was that a part of that conversation as to why they shrunk the size of the board originally?
She can go.
Well, I can answer that. So, and the reason why I've been through so many reapportionments, and not just only at the time of the census, is because of the districts that decided to have their own educational systems. And so, each time that happened, then we had to look it over again and redo that. So, there was, I think there were, it may have been that it was a census, and within a year, we were doing it again, and that was dictated by law. So, but as far as our board reduction in size, we went for a long time as a 12-member board, and, and then we reduced ourselves to 11, which was an odd number, and we thought that would be beneficial. And then, we reduced to nine. I think one of the things that we looked at was just economics. I know, though, that every time we've done one, except for the time when we reduced down to nine, I, personally, my district was always growing so fast that I was representing more than, I think, 42,000 people. And so, it has to do with the demographics of the shifting of citizens. And so, as citizens shift, then so do the lines to keep the number of the, the board seats, all trying to get within a plus or minus, I don't remember what that figure was, but of the size of each other's. So, that's how it works.
That's all board, okay. We, did we go to the public already?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other requests to speak. Oh, okay, board member Howard?
Sorry. I just wanted to know if we had a, a timeline in mind, and I just know that Mr. Shamlin just brought up a point that made me think of this question, as it relates to the level of engagement that we participate in this, like constituents, the board, each board member having to, to have. So, is there a timeline? I know we, we're unsure of where the state is going, but do we just have a roundabout timeline in mind?
So, I'll just speak to that, cause I, I seem to be leading the horse on this. The, I think we will, we can get started as soon as you all, once, once the census numbers are available to us. Once, once we have what we feel like are good numbers, I'll have a pretty good pulse on that, because we'll watch what the legislature is doing, and if we pass this, we'll have our consultant already in place, so we won't have to worry about that, and then we'll get started, you know, in the process. So, I don't know that it's necessarily that we're in a hurry, but, you know, I do think the earlier we get it done, the more the public knows what their districts are, who their representatives are gonna be. If someone out there wants to run for school board, they'll know what district they're running in, and those sorts of things. And just from a practical matter, I never put forth a plan in the last reapportionment. I, I, I got on somebody else's plan. So, not everybody has to put a plan, but everybody can put a plan, and you can meet with the consultant multiple times, as often as you want to go in and tweak. You may put, see two plans that a board member has and, and say, wait, maybe we'll work together on this. And so, it, it really is, I, I actually feel pretty good about the process this time around. I feel like it's gonna be a very collaborative process, and, and it's gonna, you know, very public because of all the advertising requirements and those things. So, I feel pretty good about the process this time.
Okay. Any other board comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to item D5, litigation, recommended action is consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, general counsel of the East Baton Rouge Paris School Board in the matter of Belfair, Belfour USA Group Doing Business as Belfour Property Restoration versus Democracy Prep Louisiana Charter School et al. Civil Action Number 2096, United States District Court for the Middle District of Louisiana and to provide for related matters. Can I get a motion? First by board president Tatman, and seconded by board member Lanis. Any board comment? Seeing none? Any public comment?
Madam Vice Chair, Vice President, my apologies. In regards to litigation, it would be extremely nice if our school system can actually publish to the public in a manner for transparency how much money we're actually having to pay, because we don't reflect that in our budget. And our budget normally shows us every deficit and increase that we have, but it never reflects how much we spend on outside attorneys. We got that from Baton Rouge Business Report. It never reflects how much we have to pay to settle lawsuits. We get that from Baton Rouge Business Report. And some of that information we actually get from the advocate, thank you, Mr. Charles. It would be great, in the idea of transparency, if we create a real team for litigation. We have general counsel, Mr. Shamlin, who attends our meetings faithfully, but he's our only counsel for the school system, and we always end up having to hire outside attorneys. Why not, why not utilize our general counsel and give him more attorneys to work directly up onto him in his office? So, that way, we won't spend the more than $20 million on outside litigation. We also have special counsel, Wayne Stewart, from Hammond, Seals, and Gates. How much we pay him, that's not reflected in our budget. We keep thinking about how we're gonna operate a system, but yet, we don't actually look at the money in which we've outsourced. So, what I ask is, we can prevent litigation if we create a real true compliance program, complaint program, so that our parents and our staff can really and truly complain. If we have a real resolution department that's set aside from ESS, instead of having one person do their job, then we can actually prevent ourselves from constantly being sued. If we create an American Disabilities Act department, we could actually have all our buildings in ADA compliance, and guess what? No litigation, and we can actually get more people in here. That's the things that we actually need to have. And unfortunately, nobody seems to like to listen to me, and I'm one of your biggest persons that sue you. So, I'm just asking that maybe, just maybe, for once, we can actually listen to somebody that actually have common sense and actually adopt what I'm stating. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Any other public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Seeing no comment. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. Vice President Collins, we need to do a roll call. District one, Mr. Baloo? Oh, wait, never mind. The motion carries.
Thank you. Let me now move to section E, item one, announcement of meetings. Who has it this time? Me? Okay, all right. I don't know why, I thought somebody else was supposed to read. Okay, announcement of meetings, regular board meeting to be held on February 18th at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. Committee of the whole meeting to be held on March 4th at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. That being said, can I get a, a move for adjournment by board member Connie Bernard? And we are adjourned.